Silence.
Good morning, everybody. We're giving out here with the public movements. Uh, of Jude Gates, Jude.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bill Prado said it gets full treatment. Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the August first, twenty twenty four, Indian County Commissioners Meeting. Um, on Zoom, we've got Catherine, the manager of the Sheriff's Department. I don't, I can't see, uh, there's no video. None of us clear.
Chuck.
It's Charlie.
Sheriff is there as well. And I'm sure other people will start joining us as we go along. In the room, we have Jude Gates.
Sure.
We have, uh, Kate Casey, we have Kendra, Mayall, we have Superintendent Henry, Julie Hoyt, we have Michelle Smith. Uh, we have Commissioner Godu.
Good morning.
We have Leila, um, and myself on the chair, Brian Chiacello. Um, Commissioner Coyle is not in the meeting today. She's got some family, family outing, which she didn't need to be at, so. Alright, so let's begin with the RFP openings for Housekeeping Services. That's your cue.
Oh, sorry. I'm not used to being clerked. Okay, make a motion to authorize a senior director of facilities, planning and IT to review, evaluate proposals and return with a recommendation.
Now second that, is there any discussion on this motion?
Nope.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are on to consent agenda. Seven twenty-five, twenty-four meeting minutes.
A motion to approve the July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, public and non-public meeting minutes.
Okay, I'll second that. Is there discussion? Is there any additions, attractions or whatnot? The only thing I have is, um, I'm gonna ask that, uh, can we split these two instead of bringing them together? Um, if that's okay. From that?
No.
Alright, so let's begin with the public, July twenty, public minutes.
Okay, so I rescind my previous motion and I'll make a motion to approve the July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, public meeting minutes.
Thank you. Second on that motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Um.
Okay, so I guess I'll, is there, we need to discuss anything?
Um, you make the motion and then we'll.
I'll make a motion to approve the July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, non-public meeting minutes.
Okay, and I'll second that for discussion purposes, um. What I wanted to discuss, and where I find it here, um, I would personally like to change.
Can I just interrupt for one second? These are non-public minutes and I'm not sure that it's appropriate for us to discuss changes to the non-public minutes that have been sealed.
Uh, it's, we're, we're talking about a motion. There's nothing outside of the fact that I just said I want to change my vote. It's, it, it, it looks like you, Commissioner Coyle, and myself voted yes on the minutes of the fifth non-public session. And I just, I'm requesting that I, that I'm able to change my vote, which I have every right to do.
So are the minutes inaccurate?
No.
The minutes are accurate, but you're asking to change your vote?
Yes.
On what topic?
On the non-public. The fifth.
Okay, so it might not be appropriate for you to tell me what topic. Uh, but nevertheless, we need to discuss that to understand whether or not we should make a change. I don't, honestly, right now, I don't even know what you're talking about.
Well, it says right there, the fifth non-public session. You have the minutes in front of you.
I don't have them in front of me.
Okay. So, uh, if, I mean, if you feel more comfortable, we can table this for further discussion next week when Commissioner Coyle's here. I'm, I'm just requesting to change my vote.
I think.
It doesn't change anything because the three of us voted the same way. I changed my vote, doesn't change anything. It's not unsealing anything. I'm just changing my vote, but if you don't feel comfortable, that's fine. You can wait till next week.
Yeah, I think we should table this until next weekend.
So I'll second the motion to table that. So we table those non-public minutes. Right, on to payroll.
Fifth session. Okay.
Payroll.
Make a motion to approve the payroll expense in the amount of one million, six hundred thirty-one thousand, nine hundred sixty-seven and eighteen cents for the period ending July twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four.
Second on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Commissioners, uh, updates. Do you have anything? No?
No.
Um, yeah, so I've got some stuff that I need to talk about. And I have been a commissioner for close to four years. I have been wrestling for the last week of the fact that um, the process, and it has nothing to do with personalities, it's the process of, uh, hiring a long-term care director. Uh, originally, we had three candidates uh, that we were supposed to interview. And one dropped out. And then the second person dropped out a day before we were interviewing. Um, I did call HR, mentioned my displeasure of only having one person to interview. Um, and was asked whether I wanted to go forward with it. I said, well, it's already scheduled, so I had no problem with that. Um. Now, the fact that we were not in public session to go into non-public, if yes, it was posted, but there was no motion made in a public atmosphere to go into non-public to discuss this. There were no minutes taken. And there was no discussion at the end of that meeting, um, to seal any minutes at all. So the law is very clear that within seventy-two hours, well, first off, it's an illegal meeting because we didn't vote to go into it. Um, but even if you did, in seventy-two hours, it's all public because there was not voted to seal those minutes. I agree, the following day, there was a discussion on salary piece that is non-public, and we won't go into that. Uh, however, I have to say, again, this has got nothing to do with people, personalities, it's all process. I've been very fortunate in my twenty years in politics to be able to interview people in top positions at least six times, at least six times. Never, never have I had only one candidate to interview, never. I had asked HR to reach out and get two more. I had asked my fellow commissioners to not make any decisions, to ask for two more people because that's the proper protocol. And the two other commissioners refused and decided to, that they were okay with hiring that one person. To me, that gets me upset. Right? And, and I'm not, I'm not happy with that process. Now, I'm one of three, so the other two basically outruled me, but I will say that, um, towards the end of that meeting, I did walk out. I had no conversation with the other two commissioners about salary, which they did. I have no knowledge of what they talked about. Uh, but I'm assuming that they, they did talk about it because as I was leaving the room, Commissioner Coyle asked me what I was leaving while they were going to talk about money. And I said yes, and I walked out of the room. So I did not partake in that strictly from the fact that I just think that one candidate is the second largest in this county, in the state of New Hampshire. To, a- and, and all the resources we have, a hundred and three million dollar budget to get one person to make interview is completely wrong. Now, again, I did ask my fellow commissioners, I, I, I let them know that we, I think we should get two more people and interview them, and if the person they chose was the best person, great. I have no problem with that. And again, it's not about personalities. Okay, it's the process. And so I'm basically lodging a protest here, uh, that I'm not happy with. So I just want to be clear, I think the public has to know this. It can't be swept under the rug um, and, and not talk about. This is a transparency issue. So that's what I've got to say, um, and everything's moving forward. Well, well, I gave you your opportunity, you said no. So to speak.
I'd just like to comment on what you said.
You can make a comment.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd just like to clarify a couple of points. First of all, our staff interviewed twenty-seven candidates. They boiled it down to three that they thought were appropriately qualified. And two dropped out before, after the meeting was scheduled, and that's why we only had one. I, uh, also, I did discuss with human resources if this procedure was done in the normal procedure because uh, I was a little concerned, we didn't have a public meeting where we actually took a vote. And I was told that it would be uncommon for, to have a public vote far higher such as this, that this is the normal procedure and the way that we've always hired, um, division directors. Honestly, I didn't confirm that, uh, and it's worthy of discussion. I don't recall you asking us to not vote. I only recall you, your objection to the fact that we only interviewed one candidate uh, that the board of commissioners did, even though the, uh, rest of the staff had interviewed twenty-seven candidates. Uh, and you walked out of the room before the conversation was complete. So I, I, I respect your objection. Uh, and I think that it's worthy of some more discussion and, uh, probably we'll take it up at the next meeting. If, if you put it on the agenda. Or we bring it up as due business.
Um, okay, so you don't recall me mentioning that we should, before we make any decisions, and we should actually ask, because I think it was you that mentioned, do we have any more applications? And the answer was, is one came in that day. Now, I don't know the details of it. You asked the question.
That, that's right. There was a new candidate.
And I had mentioned that as, again, that's fine. If everyone thinks the person that we chose was the best, that's fine. I have no problem with that. But I need something to compare them to, having one, as I mentioned before, I, I've been through this process six times, kind of dairy. Um, a fifty-three million dollar budget, never, never, never have I had one person to choose from. It's, it's like, why even go through the process if you have one person? But anyway. Yes, here or there. The other commissioners went forward and, you know, the hiring process has been completed. Uh, however, I don't think the public understood that and doesn't know that. So I think it's important that they do know that. And if they have questions, they can ask whatever commissioner they want to, you know, but that's all. So, alright. Let's move on to, um, the corrections of previously approved public minutes. That'd be one beat.
Okay. Uh, a motion to, I, I motion to approve a correction to the June twenty twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-four Board of Commissioners' public meeting minutes.
Second on the motion, are you at discussion?
No, it was, uh, I think an appropriate correction. It wasn't significant, but appropriate.
On the motion?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Alright, uh, facilities operation?
Okay, so on the facilities operation, we have a discussion.
Yeah, N H D S.
Yeah, N H D S, PFAS contamination discussion.
Yeah.
Uh, Jude, you wanna lead that discussion?
I do, please. Um, I received a request from DES and they're inquiring, they're asking us to provide information on how much money we've spent with regard to PFAS. There were a number of bullets, I believe they sent it to the majority of municipalities in the state. They have a lawsuit pending, and I know that the board had decided some time ago not to, um, sign on with a lawsuit. Um, it didn't work out great on the open, like, I think the county, this county prefers to handle its own issues. They are requiring, requiring expenditures and et cetera. They want it by next Monday. I've queried our, um, the consultants that we've been using at GCA, Geo Environmental, they've been helping us with the site investigation report, they've been our liaison to T E S with all of the reporting and so on. They didn't seem to think that providing the information would necessarily sign us on with the state's lawsuit. I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of it, where there is a legal issue um, before I started gathering information and sending it to them. That's essentially it.
Uh.
So do we, did we incur expenses?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And you're must be in the process of collecting those?
I have access to the data. I was waiting for the board's strategy. Yes.
Alright, Jason.
So you brought the, oh, good. So when it, just, uh, some history, oh, good, a baby, when it came around and people sued for, um, the misuse of medications that were out there, got people addicted. When that came around, the state was suing, and then, um, the act sponsors want to jump on. The counties at first decided to do their own thing, then some counties jumped on with the state, Rockingham did not, and one other one. Uh, anyways, end result was that we end up having, ended up in the having, we're taking what the state did, because it's twenty-three subdivisions. Uh, that's how they negotiated out, otherwise we still had to go into court and made one, not one, and pay, kind of like paid a lot of legal bills. So I just suggest something, you might want to take a look at what the state is doing compared to what it might cost you for an attorney if you're planning on trying to get some money back. Uh.
I don't think we were even considering at this point a lawsuit. We received a money, uh, letter from, I want to say New Hampshire Attorney General, maybe a year or so ago, and we're still waiting to see where that goes. Supposedly DES right now is just trying to gather information about the financial impact of PFAS throughout the state. That's sort of come to me since I got that letter. I just wanted to make sure you guys are okay with me collecting all this information and forwarding to them.
Yeah, it's a request from the state. I, I have no problem. I mean, it sounds like all we did is we studied and monitored.
And it's ongoing.
We've done no remediation at all.
No, we don't have a remediation strategy yet.
Really see where our standing is in, in, in any liability, because, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is pre-gates nighttime. The PFAS that we have is probably allowing, um, local fire departments to, to use our land
Right.
for the spray bomb that had this P, PFAS in it.
That's right.
So I don't even know where, I mean, so I, I don't see how, like, where we, who we sue. Certainly not suing the fire station.
No, I think they're suing like Scotch and.
The camp.
Yeah.
Like the Okers, so they go.
Yeah, that's who they're going after. And I think there's a variety of entities that are engaging in lawsuits, and I think that was one of the reasons why the board chose to, like,
Go ahead.
not do it at the time.
Yeah, I, I think.
Informational.
Yeah. Go ahead.
But I think that you should collect the data. Uh, maybe the board ought to look at the data before you send it to DES, so that we know what's being sent.
Okay.
I, I did note that in that request that they wanted, um, costs for ongoing contracts that have not been yet paid. So I want to make sure that if we do have a contract with a, uh, a vendor that is doing something to, uh, monitor or improve the PFAS, that we list what future costs that are already uh,
Incurred.
incurred or, you know, will be incurred.
We have an open purchase order with GZA. We know exactly how much money we're in for, how much we've spent, how much we don't.
So if you're in agreement, we ought to get that information before it gets sent to DES, so that's just, we know what's coming up.
True thing.
That would be great. Thank you.
Alright, any more discussion? Alright, let's move on to, um, financial office, the civil services write-offs.
Make a motion to approve year-end June thirty, twenty twenty-four write-offs for the sheriff's office totaling five hundred sixty dollars and sixty cents, as recommended by the senior director of finance and the high sheriff.
I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion?
They're small, minor charges.
On, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Um, second write-off threshold.
Make a motion to increase the threshold for potential individual write-off items authorized by the senior director of finance from twenty-five dollars to one hundred dollars as recommended by the senior director of finance.
Uh, second, any discussion?
Well, I think that, um, right now, we're doing a lot of paperwork and have to approve anything, uh, you know, over twenty-five dollars and right, the, uh, the write-offs for the whole year, there's, there was not one charge that was more than seventy-eight dollars. I think that this, uh, level of authority by the senior director of finance is, uh, would, would make sense. I, I trust him to, uh, or whoever's in that position to make a good judgment, follow whether something should be written off. I didn't see anything in the list of write-offs that looked particularly unusual. Uh, there were services that were done by the sheriff's department that didn't get paid for. I, I, I don't see the issue.
Yeah. Alright, so, um, on the motion, uh, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Alright, uh, exception request seven, go on. Long-term care.
Motion to approve an exception request to personnel policy C seven-four for a long-term care service employee, LG, as recommended by the senior director of human services.
Second, discussion? Uh, a motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, second exception request.
I make a motion to approve an exception request to personnel fa- policy seven dash four for a long-term care service employee, BV, as recommended by the senior director of human services.
Second. Discussion?
Uh, oh, I, just for clarification for anybody who's, uh, watching what we're doing here, uh, these are stipends that are being offered for the extra work that is being done by employees in the absence of our, uh, long-term care director. So they're compensated for the extra time that they have to put in, um. I think it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars a week.
So on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Um, exception request nine-three, Sheriff's Office.
Make a motion to approve an exception request to personnel policy nine dash three, sick pool leave for a sheriff, sheriff's office employee, JS, as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
I second that. Any discussion? On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Revised job description?
I make a motion to approve a revised job description for the maintenance foreman effective August first, twenty twenty-four, as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second, any, any discussion?
It'd look good. I read through it.
Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Amendments to the previously approved travel and training requests?
I make a motion to amend the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four approved human resources, travel and training motion to increase the total estimated expenses from four thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollars and sixty-six cents to four thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second, and it appears to me that was for your transposure number originally.
Did I transpose the number?
No, not you. I said, it appears that that's why we got this in front of us.
Oh, yeah.
The seven.
And it's a small value.
Yeah, yeah, so that's probably what happened. But, alright, on the motion?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Alright, we're on to new business, old business. Any new business to share?
I have nothing to bring up.
Okay, um, anybody have any new business they want to share or old business? No?
It's only you or I.
Well, I can ask if anyone, oh, oh, Jason, I thought maybe Jason had something to add.
No, I'm just looking to see where it says the department updates, but if you're not doing.
Oh, yeah, I don't see department updates, but let's, uh, let's use new business to do that. Good thoughts.
I think we're just not pulling.
So I'm gonna stand with you, Jason.
I'm like, I'm okay, we don't have to. Uh, so, uh, we had a major, uh, water project yesterday, uh, over to jail, um, Jude's department had to shut down the water, drain everything, replace a, uh, was it a copper? A trench copper plate?
Six inch copper.
A trench copper plate. Wow, and so we were shut down, I'd say, water, but it went well. We had bought, uh, gallons of water for each one of the inmates. They got there early in the morning, so drinking water, and we had the, uh, gallon buckets in case we had some other bathroom issues. Jude got us four bodies, uh, so it went well. It came back on, and it was a relief, ran to the bathroom real quick and then, then four.
Don't tell me you flushed the toilets all.
Uh, well, our plan just leaked, so, um, then they had to shut it back down again, but hours before four o'clock yesterday, all been running. So her staff did a fantastic job. We appreciate that. Um, hiring is still going very, very strong for us.
Oh, good.
Uh, just want to give you an update. So in-house, I got a hundred and sixteen inmates. I have another twelve on pre-trial status. I have fifty-one in adult aversion. And I have nineteen other, so, so we have two hundred and thirty-four inmates that we're in charge of right now, so just to give you an update.
It's growing just a little bit, huh?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's been heading the other direction where we were.
Um, is that uncommon during the summer or not?
Uh, usually it's, I mean, you get a lull in summer, well, weekends high, then we dip back down on Mondays. So it's a lull, and Rachel holidays, lull, but in general, we've been going up steadily, um, but courts have opened up and those kinds of things, so in general, we've been creeping up on numbers.
Right, thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Very, very good. Um, I'm gonna go to.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, all is well in finance. We're still under the FY twenty-three audit. I think we're getting close to the end of tonight. Uh, we hired Molly, the new grant writer. She started on Monday.
Oh, good.
So she's learning all the grants, getting the lay of the land, and she'll be reaching out to all the department heads to discuss current grants. Um, things that they want to put forward for new grants. Other than that, um, that's really it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Kendra?
Good morning. Um, over in assisted living, occupancy remains high. We still have a very long waitlist. Um, we are experiencing some AC issues that Jude and her team are steadily working on. Um, it has affected several resident rooms. We have some fans in there, so we're hoping to get that resolved today. We are planning for assisted living week, which is coming up in September for our residents, so a lot of planning is going on regarding that. Um, in relation to long-term care, last week we had our, um, quarterly compliance meeting, which went well. And then Elaine and I are prepping for, we have a compliance audit next week through our, uh, the company called FSA. So Elaine and I are very deep in prepping for that audit that will take place.
Okay, pretty good. Sounds like you guys are busy. Julie?
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, I just have a couple of things. So we are experiencing an increase in leave requests, of course, because it's summer, so that's, that's keeping everybody busy. Um, in addition to the grant writer on Monday, there were eight other employees that started, three COs, two dispatch operators, a deputy, a weekender nursing manager, and a PD and LNA. So it was a really busy orientation and it was great. Um, the word is all the employees did their paperwork on time. They all showed up on time and they all asked great questions, so it was a great orientation.
Can I say that?
The staff online.
They usually do it in-house or in their small area. They actually had to go to a larger room this time because so many people being hired at once.
Wonderful. That's good.
It was great. Um, let's see, motivate me, uh, incentive payments are due to come in the next paycheck in two weeks. We're still looking for a bunch of forms from people. We need to have those forms back, so Eileen, I think we'll be reaching out to departments today for that. And just one more thing on a personal note, um, I have a family member that is in the rehab uh, wing right now that came from a different facility, and it is night and day, the care that they're getting here at Rockingham. So I really, um, I really appreciate the staff. They've been awesome and doing a great job.
Yeah.
That's it.
Thanks, Julie. Michelle?
Yes, good morning. Um, I was gonna report that we did bring on a new per diem LNA, um, this week and a weekend supervisor, so the weekend. The weekend supervisor position has been empty for about five weeks. So the one weekend supervisor is very, very excited to have her on board, and. Um I met with her again this week, and she's super excited to start, so I think that's gonna be a great addition to the team. We did have two um new cases of staff COVID over the last week, so we're pretty deep in contact tracing. Um I think we have maybe twenty five or so people being traced for those two exposures. Um so far, everybody is testing positive and remaining asymptomatic. Um and.
Testing, just testing negative.
Testing negative, sorry, yes.
Sorry.
Uh thank you. Um and O C Health is off for a few days, so we'll be fielding um everything that goes through O C Health.
And we're still waiting for the state to come in.
Yes, yep, we're still waiting for them every day.
Anxiously waiting.
Yes. Yes.
Good. Anything else? All right, I'm gonna go to Jude.
Good morning.
Morning.
Oswald and Facilities Operations, we are pretty busy. Um they did test pits at the lab farm. This week on Monday, there we're looking for the possibility of expansion of our spray for additional discharge from the wastewater treatment facility, and in this case. We're looking for um soil injection, so we have a field that's otherwise unused that could give us an opportunity for. Maybe ten to fifteen thousand gallons a day, that's going. So over the course of a week, that would be more than a day's worth.
Yeah.
Um so it would be a good expansion for us, and um it's part of the whole plan for getting. The facility to maximum capacity before the new building is done.
Good.
Um to that end, I met with the electrical engineer. On Tuesday, who's doing the spec for all of the electrical upgrades that need to be done, hopefully that'll go to our week next week. Um. So that happened, the wastewater treatment roadway from the jail driveway up. Is being paved this week, it really needed to be done, it was an R and P that was awarded a month or so ago. So that's happening this week, everybody's really happy about it. Um the plumbing went well at the jail, the jail was. Incredibly ready, which for us, I mean, it's always keeping the customers happy, you know what I mean? They were so ready that it was, we didn't have to worry about that at all, we were just able to focus on the repair, so it was really nice.
Yeah.
That we didn't have any phone calls and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. We do have one rooftop unit in the assisted living that's out of service right now, Frank's up on the roof with it. Four residence rooms are affected by it, we've been on it for almost three days now, Honeywell was here all day yesterday. Um it's just, it's a complicated one, but we hope to have it resolved maybe by then.
Yeah. Thanks.
That's all I got.
That's on the maintenance, uh so we the new dishwasher system.
Yeah.
That we had put in, it's in, um but unfortunately, when when maybe it's got into it, look, the the hood above it. Um. It's been all corroded and rotted, and there was an A C unit that's working well, but the drain on the bottom's been plugged, so it was been leaking down the wall, including onto electrical box. Um. We have to have that hood replaced before uh they turn the whole system on, otherwise they won't warranty it for us. So we're gonna be on styrofoam for next two to three weeks because it's being fabricated now in Cambridge and Jude's pushing as fast as she can, because once that's done, it'll go up. Um yesterday it was leaking again a little bit, so it's working on fixing that issue, um. They care, so so we have the dishwasher in, it's just that we were not able to use it yet until that's fabricated, but we wouldn't have known any of this until we started getting this project, that was all.
It was buried, yeah.
Yeah.
That's why you have like contingencies.
Yeah, and it gets, and it's, you know, affects my budget, that's which is fine, um we'll figure it out, but this two, three weeks, styrofoam's expensive, and then. Jude has to up the uh uh getting the dumpsters because it's a lot of waste, so.
Okay.
Just like what I.
Yeah. Um, all right, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go to the sheriff. Morning.
Hey, uh good morning, uh nothing really new to report, I mean, yesterday went very well. Uh with the water being shut off at the office, um. Um otherwise than that, I mean, we like we extremely busy, uh I'm sure that. You know that courthouse was shut down, I'm sure Kathy will say something about that. Um. Be nice to get into that new building, uh I just wanna give a compliment to Jude, um. The new young man that you hired over in automotive, he's doing a phenomenal job over there. Um. It's it it's a well-run machine over in that garage, I can tell you that, being so long, so that definitely was a good hire. Um. I'm sure Jude's happy about it too, so, but uh no, everything's fine, um and we'll see you next week, have a good week.
Thank you. All right, um. Kathy Stacy.
Good morning, uh yeah, so as you know, the courthouse got closed down yesterday because of the um. Coolant leak over here, it's still, it's still, there's still a strong odor within the building, but we're told it's safe, um. So we're here, we're doing our, you know, doing our damnedest, because I have to tell you. The amount of uh backup backlog in our electronic filing was incredible, so. Staff's working hard to get that over and done with, we did have a big transaction that took place in Salem. The birches, Steve, the birches Academy bought the property on South Broadway for seven million dollars.
Ooh. Very nice.
Yeah, very nice, and uh other than that, uh everybody's working hard, doing their thing, and we cannot wait for the new building, thank you.
Very good, thanks, yeah, I saw that on channel nine, they actually reported on that incident.
Yes, yes, and I and it, you know, and it would, and it would be remiss if I didn't thank. Uh whether it's the Sheriff's Department, Jude, and obviously Robin for helping us out with all the stuff that we had to get in line and get in place. Uh to be able to get out of here yesterday, so thank you, guys.
Yeah. Um, okay, uh Leila, do you have anything?
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Okay. Um, we had someone new come in, I'm. Wondering if that is in the common heads or just a pub member of the public? I don't know. Anyone recognize that? Is your own name, all right. So we we, I'm gonna go back to new business, old business, I don't think anyone's had anything unless they changed their mind. Uh and now I'll go to public comment. If there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak, now is your opportunity. If you're home on the fall, I believe it's. I wanna say it's star nine to to. Take off a mute, but. Anybody? All right, um so we're gonna go into non-public, uh now let Commissioner Goddard do make the motions. Going to non-public.
Make a motion to enter non-public session, current New Hampshire R S A ninety one dash A, poll and three, section two A on regarding personnel.
Second. On the motion, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, everybody, thank you very much, appreciate everybody. Uh have a good week.
Thank you.
Fine. Okay, welcome back, everybody, um we're coming out of non-public, and Commissioner Goddard has a motion to read.
Uh I make a motion to seal the non-public minutes indefinitely. Uh for sessions one, three, and four. Because it's determined that divulgence of this information would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of this board.
Second. On the motion, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Uh I make a motion to seal non-public minutes. Um. I don't even know if we should seal those minutes.
Which one, number two?
Number two.
Which was, I'm just giving the.
Raven.
Oh. No, I don't think we need to seal those.
Okay, then I have no more motions.
Yes, you do, one more.
I vote you to adjourn.
Uh, second. Uh on the motion, Mr. Goddard?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, this was Kathy Stacy.